All right, once we start. Good morning, San Miguel County. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, March 26, 2025, and it is 9:30 a.m. Present in the room are two commissioners, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Gleason. Commissioner Waring is not with us today. We also have staff and one member of the public. I guess we're the public. Elaine Davis from Tyrrid Foundation, who we will be chatting with soon. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you. We will now move to item four, review of the agenda. Galena or staff, does anybody have any changes, amendments, deductions from the agenda? See if anyone knows.
No, from me.
Okay, we will proceed as outlined. Moving on now to item number five, public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes. If comments are not related to an item on the agenda, there will be no board response or action taken since the topic was not posted with proper notice, and any comment could potentially violate the Colorado Open Meetings law. I am looking for hands. I don't actually see any member of the public online. So we will carry on. Moving on now to administrative matters. The first item is six A. Laney, please step up if you'd like to be.
Yes.
Third, approval of the MOU with the Tyrrid Foundation for the Shared Equity Downpayment Assistance Program. Mike Ordonea will begin, and then we'll see if Elaine has anything to add.
Very good. Thanks, commissioners, and good morning, and thank you for being here, Ms. Davis. And this concept was brought forth to the Board last year with a request that we support this down payment assistance program from the Tyrrid Foundation. I'll let Elaine speak to how this program is a little different than previous down payment assistance programs that have been offered. We first had a discussion at the San Miguel Regional Housing Authority level that we participate in with the town of Telluride. And back before 2022, we were also in partnership with the Town of Mountain Village in that same program. And they offered a down payment assistance program at that time, and all the three entities had equally contributed funding into that. That program had not deployed any new loans since 2018, and we've accounted for the ones that have come back. There is still one outstanding. But essentially, we voted at the board level of SMRHA knowing that we were not having success with deploying those funds for the intended purpose. And the purpose that the foundation approached us with really met the needs and the desire of the SMRHA board. So we dispersed a little bit of the funds to each or from each of the entities to the foundation for the program. Their requests have been for $200,000 in 2025 and $100,000 in 2026 to intercept this program that is also being matched by their private donor funds and has a kind of revolving model to continue to be able to fund future down payments for those that qualify. So before us here, previously, there have been two agreements that were shared with us, and I appreciate the foundation's work to consolidate this into this one. One document, and the board had voted to include that amount of the remaining funds to get us up to a $200,000 contribution during the 2025 budget process. And so we're here to bring this to fruition and execute, and hopefully see the foundation launches this program soon. I'd like to turn it over to Elaine.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I know I've presented this many times, so I don't know if you want me to review it again just briefly, or if you have just want to have questions, or what's the best way to proceed. I'm happy to give you just a two-minute little overview to Mike's point about how it differs from what we're doing now. Would that be helpful?
How what differs?
How this new program that we're launching is different from what we're already offering. And maybe, Galena, I don't know how much.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that because I've just been presented this.
Okay.
Once, and there wasn't that fact well.
So since, since 2019, there has been a program. First, it was run by the Trust for Community Housing, and then we merged with the, the trust merged with the Tyrrid Foundation in the spring of 2023. But since 2019, this down payment assistance program has been available primarily to folks in the R1 school district. Our service area is much larger than that. So this new program will be expanded to our service area. But the existing program is a forgivable loan, a maximum of $5,000, and we've deployed a little under $300,000 since 2019 in that program. So it's very helpful. If you stay in your home for two years, you don't have to pay that $5,000 back. But it's really, really focused on those last mile kind of costs, you know, closing costs and small fees. It's not really moving the needle in terms of homeownership. So through a lot of different meetings and research, we, we determined with some help from leadership from the county and Town of Mountain Village and Telluride, that it would be great if the Tyrrid Foundation could do more. So again, after about six to eight months of research, we decided to zero in on a much larger, more robust program that would provide up to $100,000 in down payment assistance to qualifying families. These are not forgivable loans. You have to pay them back, but they are designed as a shared appreciation loan, so the applicant, the borrower pays nothing, no principal, no interest for the life of the loan until you, until the applicant, the home buyer, homeowner at that point sells or refinances their home, and then they pay us back. They pay the fund back the principal of the loan as well as a pro rata share of the appreciation of the home. So that helps us, you know, keep the fund rolling. It is a revolving loan fund that helps us redeploy money in the future to, to future qualifying families. So that's what we designed, and we've spent the last year raising money for this program and working through all the technical aspects of it. You know, we cannot, the Tyrrid Foundation cannot loan, can't make mortgages. We're not a financial institution. So we partnered with the Impact Development Fund, which is a community development financial institution. They run these programs all across the state. They, they run about 80 plus now of these programs for a variety of taxing districts and, and regional municipalities. So we partnered with them. Just today, we got our final service agreement approved by both sides of attorneys, and so we're ready to sign that, and we completed our fundraising in February. We set an internal goal of 1.4 million for the first year, and we met that goal in February. So we are now just dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and we have a bunch of families in the queue waiting for this to be launched, and it hopefully will be launched by the end of the month. So that's what we're doing.
Thanks. That's really helpful. It's just that background that you know.
You bet.
For that, so.
And Laney, can you just bring us up to speed on where things stand with the other two govern, local governments? Just as a reminder to myself and whoever else cares, when we, the county voted to participate at this level, $200,000, we were doing that with the impression, under the impression that the other two jurisdictions would participate. And I understand that that has not necessarily been firmed up. Can you share that with us, please?
Sure. So the town of Mountain Village is not participating with a cash contribution. What they are doing is they are expanding their, your equity share program, not only throughout the R1 school district, but also the R2 school district, which, which encompasses Norwood. So as part of our original design, well, first, let me step back. The, the homes that we will, that qualify for this program must be deed restricted. So if you find a free market home, let's say in Norwood, it's under the $850,000 limit, which is the home price limit we have set, and it's not deed restricted, we would have to find some mechanism to deed restrict that house in order for us to provide this down payment assistance. So that's a little, you know, a little sketchy, a little technical. We have to, I mean, if it's in Norwood, it's fine because it would fall under San Miguel County, but our service area is much broader than that. We serve San Miguel County, Urae County, where there is no, at the moment, housing authority in Urae County. They're working on it, but today there is none. The towns of Núclea and Natarita, there is no housing authority out there. So it was sort of like, you know, a little bit of a snafu for us that we were trying to work through. But the Mountain Village does have this program where they will take a free market property and deed restrict it, and they will pay the homeowner to do that. Up to 20% of the cost of the home, up to $200,000, which is double what we're doing. So instead of what we're able to do, so instead of providing us with cash, they basically took that aspect of our program, sort of took it off our plate. Now, if you come to us and you find a free market home anywhere, you might start the application process with us, but once we figure out what the property is and where it is and who you are, and if you qualify, because you do have to work in the R1 school district in order to tap into the new expanded YES program, we'll send you up to the Mountain Village. You'll apply through them, and we'll be using their funds to help that family get into a home. So for us, it seemed like a much more robust way to support us because it's not going to be capped at $200,000. It's $200,000 per home. So we just saw it as a way for us to sort of stretch our dollars. We won't be dealing with the free market properties anymore. They will be. So it seemed like a great partnership, and we are really happy with that outcome. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I have one. So just for clarification, the applicant would, for the YES program, which is the Mountain Village program, needs to work within the R1 school district, but they can apply.
Or the property can be in R1 or R2.
The property can be in R1 or R2, but they need to work in R1.
That's correct.
And with the Shared Equity Downpayment Assistance Program, does the applicant need to live within R1 or R2? What, what are the stipulations?
No, for our, for the Tyrrid Foundation's program, you need to live and work in the Tyrrid Foundation's service area, which is all the areas I just mentioned. Yeah, so you can live and work in Norwood. You can live and work in Urae or any, any area that we serve, including Rico, which is actually is part of the R1 school district.
I think that YES program expansion is terrific, and I really applaud Mountain Village for extending that beyond their borders because it allows us to actually create more inventory, and it will benefit folks throughout the R1, R2. So that's great. And what is the status with the town of Telluride?
We're presenting one last time to the town of Telluride on April 1st, which is next week. There was apparently a little bit of confusion about our fundraising efforts amongst town council people. There was this issue with the Mountain Village, which I just explained that they are not providing a cash contribution, rather expanding their YES program. And the other was, I was, I did apply for state funding, Prop 123 funding, but as I sort of started digging into that application, I realized that the Tyrrid Foundation was not qualified to apply. You had to be the lender. And in our case, the Impact Development Fund is the lender. So they applied for the funding, and we supported that application. We wrote a letter of support. They actually put our program into their application, explaining to DOLA that that's what they were planning to do. And they were. And they were, it was interesting, they were neither really denied or awarded. They already have funds from the Division of Housing for a down payment assistance program that was set to expire. In um, I believe it was June this year. And instead of getting Prop one, two, three funding, the Division of Housing said, we're just going to extend your down payment assistance program. Through the end of twenty twenty six, which coincidentally is our two year pilot program. So what that does is just allow us to access state of Colorado money through the Impact Development Fund. And it allows us to stack our money with their money. Their money is much more restrictive than ours, um you have to make. Uh, we've set our air uh area median income at a hundred and fifty percent, and theirs is at one hundred. Would have been the same way if we had gotten the Prop one, two, three money. So it sort of for us net net, it's accessing state money um without all the um. Ownerless regulations that you have to jump through when you're and reporting that you have to do when you get state money. So IDF is handling all of that. The first applicant, I was mentioning earlier that there are some families sort of waiting for this program to launch. The first applicant will indeed qualify, they happen to live in Urae, so they won't be accessing. San Miguel County money, but they will access twenty five thousand dollars from IDF from their state money and fifty thousand dollars from the Telluride Foundation. So we're stacking money all over wherever we can.
And is the partnership with town of Telluride? Um, is this one point four million dollars contingent on them agreeing to this? Or how is that penciling out?
Well, yeah, they um, I met, the last time I met with the town of Telluride was the nineteenth of um November. And at that time, there was a straw poll vote and they voted to support us at that level. And so, yes, when I tell you that I I've reached that goal of one point four million, their hundred is in there. Um, however, I just got a donation yesterday, which would make up the difference if. If they decide they don't want to support it, and I I remain hopeful that they will, but I have no guarantees until that meeting happens.
Commissioners, I I appreciate uh Elaine explaining that high level overview of the program and programs. Um, and you also covered the fact that these funds that the county is contributing would only be deployed within San Miguel County. And I know we've had discussion about should our funds apply within Telluride or Mountain Village? And my understanding from speaking to each of you individually is because of Mountain Village's yes program expansion. We wanted to reciprocate that um that generosity. So this, we wanted it to be able to be deployed in all areas of the county. Um, and I know there was lastly some question of should we deploy them also in the town of Telluride if they choose not to participate? So that's the only thing that I think I would love to hear your thoughts on. Um.
Yeah, I mean, it, go ahead, um, I mean, the. The greater goal here is to create an opportunity for. Housing for the region, and in my mind, I'm not so concerned about which jurisdiction the person lives in, but that. They might have the opportunity to get a leg up, um, so personally, I it doesn't, I'm not so concerned with jurisdiction.
My concern would be that because in a wonderful way, there is so much housing available in the town of Telluride. That our two hundred thousand dollars could get eaten up in a nanosecond if um we don't have further support from the town of Telluride. That's my greatest concern. Um, and I don't know how we address that. I mean, I guess we could wait and see how, I mean, not wait and see, but we could see how it goes during this um trial period, the two years.
Yeah, you can also, I mean, I have many different donations from private individuals. Who want their money restricted to a certain, the only thing we can do is restrict geographically. We can't, you know, do it any other way. Um, so we can't restrict, like, say, I want my money to go to this group of people or this, you know, people who work here or whatever. We can't do that, but we can restrict it geographically, and we are restricting it geographically. And that's our job at the foundation to make sure that the people that support this program, that we deploy their money. In the way in which they want it deployed. So for example, a a very significant donation came in from someone from Urae, and they want it to go to folks in Urae County, and that's fine. So if they, if San Miguel County wanted to restrict half their money to be just deployed in the in the unincorporated areas. You know, maybe including the town of Norwood, so that you're, you know, not East End, I guess, you you could do that. That's totally up to you. Um, one more thing I wanted to mention is that we're we're keeping the other program, the the one that we're running now. The one that offers five thousand dollars in, at first we were just going to um, you know, sort of leave that one behind and just focus on this one. But after interviewing a lot of um people in the community, we felt like maybe maybe during this pilot. Program, we'll just keep it going and see if if that's still helpful to people. It's also a lot less expensive for us to give someone five thousand than it is to give a hundred thousand. And we're also expanding our rental program. Where right now, the rental program will provide up to a thousand dollars to help somebody move into a new rental. And we're more than doubling that, but we're paying, we're paying security deposits with the idea that perhaps some of that money will come back. And that will be turned turned into a revolving loan. That was a side note, sorry for digressing, but I wanted to make sure you understood, there's actually sort of now four options. The shared appreciation, the yes program, helping people get into a rental, and the existing uh forgivable loan. So there's four options for folks. So yeah, back to your.
Well, just looking at the amount of current inventory that would qualify for this program, it's barely limited, right?
I don't know about that, I mean, how, what?
Well, in the town, interestingly enough, in the town of Telluride, all of the deed restricted properties are price capped. Uh, well, there might be one or two that aren't, but most of them are. So virtually all, whenever one of those turns over, they will qualify, assuming that the buyer qualifies with their income and their job, et cetera. But they will all qualify for this program.
Because they're under eight hundred fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I don't, I haven't seen any deed restricted, I mean, I haven't seen any deed restricted property in the town of Telluride because of the price gap that would sell for more than that.
Eva, did you want something?
I was, I was just going to mention, we know that the market rate housing is kind of unavailable for this program in most of the east end of the county. Um, and so that's, but what we're really talking about, and and Lainey hit it on the head, is. For those units that are price capped, that's the only way that we're seeing potential qualification under eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. For a lot of those pieces of property, so except for Two Rivers and um potentially some units in Boston.
Hmm, yeah.
I think those are on the cusp a little bit.
Yeah.
To that point, though, um, I know we talked about, well, we, I heard um, you say commission around, we could see over the two year period. I would urge, just because this is just for this first year. Um, and this is just for the two hundred thousand dollars, obviously, we we haven't made a multi-year commitment yet. Um, although that's been discussed. But I would urge just to consider allowing it to be deployed in the, in all of the county as it is currently written. For this year, and then let's revisit and if the town does not participate and or if we're seeing all the. Funds going to town of Telluride properties, we could revisit that decision for future participation in the amount.
Um, I I think that's a great idea, I I just have to express my. Kind of dismay, I guess, that the town of Telluride hasn't moved forward with this because of the, you know. Intention that they expressed to us at the IG meeting and conversations I've had with council members and the straw vote they took. So I feel a little bit like everybody else has stepped up and I'm I'm. I'm really hopeful that they will step up on Tuesday, and so um I don't want to hold this up, our our program or our part of the program anymore. So I would suggest that we go ahead and execute this MOU and we include the town of Telluride. But um I was wondering how everyone would feel is if we wrote a letter and submitted it to the council or one of us went to the meeting next week. And encourage their participation, um, do you think that that might be helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be very helpful.
I support that idea very much so.
Okay.
Um, my only reluctance is that I think everyone should, all of the government should be stepping up and, you know. We're going to support this program throughout the county, including the municipalities. I I really hope the town of Telluride also participates um.
Okay, well, why don't we then um write a letter to that effect? And then um if one of us is available to attend and read the letter or have be part of the conversation, I'm not sure what time the agenda, it's agendized for, but. Let's do that and um, yeah.
I can, I can let you know what time we expect to be presenting.
Okay, that would be great.
So you know, if if anyone wants to come in person, that'd be great.
I've said so many times, but I'll just say it again, the reason that I think it's so important that the town of Telluride participate is. We need to give this a shot, you know, and we need to give it the best shot possible. I'm so grateful that the foundation as a community partner has offered to help our community in this way, bringing in. Over a million dollars um in resources for the program where we've only had to participate at the level of a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, so forth. Um, so I'm really grateful for that, and I also see this as a really um as an equity program. You know, we have people who cruise into Telluride with the down payment, you know, and then we have people who don't. And those are the people who are getting left behind, and I love the fact that this is such a significant. Leg up for anybody who needs it, I mean, it's not just five thousand dollars, it's up to a hundred thousand dollars, which can really have an impact. So that's my point of view, and um I think, yeah, we'll we'll do what we can to encourage the town of Telluride to participate as well. And we'll let it go for the whole county regardless of whether they participate, um, at least for this year, and then see, see how the monies are used.
Great, yeah, that sounds perfect, thank you very much. Any other questions or?
Um, we probably need a vote, right?
Need a motion.
A motion.
Um, do we want to take any?
Oh, sorry, yes.
I just noticed there is a.
Thank you, we do have public comment and. Um, Mr. Tully, would you like to speak for a maximum of three minutes on this particular subject? If so, you may unmute yourself and I will start the timer.
I believe that might have been for public comment earlier.
No, 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 there it is, it just took a while to come on through. Uh, although uh I did have um, uh. Uh, uh, comments for the non-agenda item, I logged in, uh, completed it at nine thirty two, maybe nine thirty three. Um, I was delayed um through the continuously shifting log on and entering the passcode, blah, blah, blah. Um, uh, you know, uh, that's a concern. Um, there's also a concern about the um, uh. Inconsistency in the availability of testifying on specific items, I appreciated on this one. Um, however, uh, you know, sometimes you would need to testify. Uh, on an item at the non-agenda item if it's prevented later. And I think that that maybe needs to get agendized and discussed and um to uh resolve that. Inconsistency in county policy and uh how that is applied. Uh, got a couple of of subjects here, I don't know how much time we've got.
Have um a minute twenty seconds left.
Okay, um, there was an effort with the.
Just to talk about housing, I'm sorry that you were delayed in accessing our open public comment, but we're not going to go back to that right now. You can always log on earlier if it's a tricky process.
Well, I would hope to be able to um, uh, testify on the um, uh, items as they are presented in the agenda and. Uh, in contrary to um how I have been um inconsistently obstructed previously. Um, uh, and I'll just, you know, notice that you're eating up all my time. Um, talking about these bureaucratic details. And, you know, the accumulation of those is significant, and also notice, uh, note your lack of due diligence and the financial considerations here. Uh, and yep, uh, I got some constructive comments here and some critical ones, but I don't have time to do it. So um you have blocked my testimony on this item, uh, on an item once again, thank you. Oh, and I.
You have another.
Please note that request for an agenda discussion of those inconsistencies, thank you.
You have another fifteen minutes, I'm happy to add another fifteen minutes from seconds for my comments. Go ahead.
No, thank you.
Okay, we um are ready for a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between San Miguel County and the Telluride Foundation to collaborate on a down payment assistance program. To support qualifying members of the regional workforce purchasing homes in San Miguel County.
Second, further discussion? How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye as well. Lainey, thank you for your patience as we work through this government process, we're so excited.
You're very welcome, and just just one last thing, I wanted to make sure everybody understood, um, the commissioners and staff that every, every single loan we make. Um, we will have data, we'll have documentation, we'll be sharing that with you, perhaps not names, if people want to remain, you know. That we have privacy issues, but certainly profiles of people, who they are, where they live, where they work. Um, so that, and perhaps every quarter, maybe, you know, as soon as I'm actually deploy some money. We'll be in communication with you all, so you understand where this is going and who it's helping, and I think that's pretty critical for you as you think about supporting this program moving forward. So thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate, we, Telluride Foundation, really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on now to item six B, consideration of the future uses of Mill Creek Park. Present, we have Janet Cask, Parks and Open Space Director, Greg Polio, Operations Manager, Rich Hamilton, who has another fancy title.
Park Advisor.
And Suzie Saint Ange, who is Chair of the Open Space Commission. Suzie, do you want to sit? Um, okay, you're in Lance's spot. Okay, just make sure whenever anyone's talking, you're gonna have to shift the microphone around. Because it needs, you need to be pretty close so that everyone on Zoom can hear you. Okay, who wants to begin?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Brown, and thank you, Commissioner Gleason. Um, so just, we appreciate your time today and revisiting this topic and this project. Um, so Commissioner Gleason, just to give you some background here. So the county's park site parcel was conveyed uh by SMBC back in December of twenty sixteen. This is one point zero nine acre site. And um this uh project involves not only county parks and open space staff, but. The Historical Commission and the Open Space Commission. So we sort of um have been making baby steps each year and um just futuring our vision of this park site. Um, I conducted a community wide survey back in twenty twenty. We had a cultural resource survey report prepared for the site in twenty twenty one. As the site is actually part of the historic. San Miguel City uh settlement. Um, so conceptual renderings and plans were approved by our consultant, Super Bloom, back in twenty twenty two. And um, as we've always said, this is sort of, we consider this like a passive use park, and there are renderings, um, we're sharing the screen up there right now. So design concepts have included bench seating areas, pollinator gardens, recreational amenities. Such as a natural play area, a bike skills track for kids and adults, a bicycle repair station, a sheltered picnic area. And historic interpretive elements, and we also wanted to have a bottle, a water bottle refillable station. Um, we started conversations with the town of Telluride back in twenty twenty two, just to have them consider waiving the water tap fee. Because with our pollinator gardens and plantings, we obviously would require an irrigation system. So Mike Bordonia, the county manager, and I have continued these conversations with the current town manager and the current town council. And they have been open and receptive to this idea. So they've had a couple of readings so far regarding regarding the ordinance to um have town council approve waiving of the water tap fee. I've been working with SAMPA as far as uh the transformer and power requirement details. And um the, we spoke to, the last time we met with the county commissioners was probably last summer. And at that time, you'd authorized our staff to proceed forward with. Grading of the south side of the parcel closest to the bike path and closest to the spur. And the reason why he, we had requested to do that was um, with there are some historic elements on the site. And I had received permission from SHPO to actually have those elements buried and contained within the site itself, but also to um. Grade the site to a level, um, literally level, so that it would be safer. Because we do find um people out there on the site walking around, and it just makes it safer. We also requested to uh put some picnic tables out there and some porta potties and a trash receptacle, just so that we could provide some community benefit. To the overall community itself in the interim, while the county commissioners were having separate uh discussions about the overall site. So, you know, we've, when you look at a park site, I mean, we consider this. So, you know, we've, when you look at a park site, I mean, we consider this an attribute to the community. There are housing uh developments uh proposed and existing on both sides of this open space site. And um, when you look at just the history of parks in general, from the Down Valley Park to the Placerville Park, um, our community comes out uh in force and they utilize these park sites. And they appreciate the fact that these park sites are provided to them. And um, you know, when you look at the history, you be at the gondola, the Wilkinson Public Library. Um, certain projects that were discussed early on and uh didn't always generate too much community support, but you look at how these projects came to be and how they um generated and garnered community support and they provide the services that they do to this day. So we're just looking, besides the renderings, we have a budget proposal. And um, we are going to go through that with the county commissioners and we just want to revisit this topic with you to see what you might allow us to continue to do this year. Again, you know, we consider this park site an amenity to the community. This is the first thing you see as you enter the town of Telluride. And we would really like to make it special uh to continue to provide some community benefit. Um, so Carmen, if, I don't know if you have questions on any of my comments, but we were gonna move forward and just get into the budget details.
I have a couple of questions about the twenty twenty survey. Um, how many, how many people participated in that survey and what was the general gist of that?
So the survey was open um in twenty twenty for two months, from June to, um, actually June, July, three months, excuse me. Uh, we had ninety-nine people respond. At that time, I had it uh posted on the county Facebook page, the county website. It was on Coto, it was in the Daily Planet, and I also had the town of Telluride can um include our link as they sought public comment for their proposed master plan at the time. So we did um, publicize it uh greatly. And at that time, uh, people wanted to see, again, you know, our emphasis and focus has been on passive use, but from picnic tables to benches, uh, the pollinator garden, um historic interpretive signage and um, you know, we had talked about a dog park area at the time, the bike repair station, just various amenities that the community felt would provide them with some benefit.
Was there a question in there about, are you in support of a park? Or not? Or were the questions more like, if we built a park, what sorts of amenities would you like to see?
Um, well, I had four questions. Uh, the first one was, county currently maintains two parks, Down Valley Park and the Placerville Park Schoolhouse. How often do you and your family visit and enjoy our county parks? Um, I had another question too, was several outdoor recreation facilities and amenities could be included in the county's new Mill Creek Park site? What would you like to see and for use on this site? The park will be day use only, no camping or overnight activities. Uh, please note there, at that time, there was no current plan for water or sewer services at the location.
And then was that a, was that a multiple choice or a ranking?
Yes, I.
Open-ended question?
Um, I had multiple choice answers, but I also always had the other please specify category so that people could enter in their own details. Um, and we had some pretty creative ones as far as what people didn't want to see out there. Um, and then I also had one, how would you access the new Mill Creek Park site? County needs to assess parking requirements. Biking, walking, driving. Um, I have had subsequent conversations with Smart as far as um, you know, adding that as an official bus stop as well, just to get people to this uh park itself. And then the last question was, um, is there anything you wouldn't want to see at the park? And if so, please write in your response. That was totally open-ended and um left open. So um, most people, again, um, you know, most people just said that they wanted to see various uses from play equipment, um, parking, you know, they're pretty, pretty specific with um, uh, excuse me, no pickleball courts, you know, no, um, uh, excuse me, um, skateboarding, um, and uh just various things like that. Um, two people said nothing, leave the space alone.
Is there a question about dog use, just out of curiosity?
Well, what we had initially proposed was a dog park in there. And again, these are just proposed renderings. They can still change. Um, the one thing in just revisiting the topic, because yes, I had seven people who said they wanted a dog park. But when we looked at the physicality of the site, because it is only an acre for what we were um earmarking for that dog park site, it was small. So then we just tried to get creative with other responses from the community. And we were gonna put in like a little bike skills track that would be useful for kids and adults. That was gonna sort of um be designated to the one area. It's the top north corner. Um, but then also adding in track like around the park itself. So we just felt that provided more community benefit. But again, the, based on conversations today, um, and future um discussions with the community, you know, these plans can morph and change over time. So I mean, for now, we just have some picnic tables out there. We have seen usage. We do have a designated park area. We did have porta potty, trash receptacles, uh, dog poop, dog waste station. Um, so we've seen people out there and um, you know, we do feel that for the community benefit, we are currently providing. People are taking advantage of that and using it. So again, we wanted to revisit the topic with the county commissioners again today, walk through our budget with our updated figures. Um, and just, we've called out some numbers for what we feel we can accomplish in-house. And then those other numbers for what we feel, you know, we, we need to hire contractors to perform. Um, but again, just open to the conversation and would love to hear some feedback.
And I'm also just curious if this wasn't utilized as park space. What could it be utilized for? Like, what are the, has, it's been established that it can't be as utilized for housing?
Exactly.
It's a part of the Mill Creek and Deep Creek PUDs um as designated very clearly as solely, it can only be a park.
Great. Just for the public record, I want
Right.
Yes, folks to know that.
Yeah.
For open.
Yes.
Correct.
It's open space less park.
There would be, there is a mechanism, tell me if I'm right, to change that use, which would be condemnation, right?
You can't solely condemn out a PUD by one party, to my knowledge. And that, that was Amy Markwell's legal opinion at the time.
I'm not sure what that means. I can't condemn out by one party. The parties would have to agree.
Yeah, and I see Kay Simonsons on and I know, um, I, I would want to revisit that um legal opinion that Amy gave us, but I also think Kay might remember off the top of her head.
Um, yeah, I'd have to search back through my records to find uh Amy's um opinion on that. Um, but I do want to note that this property um is a uh, was dedicated for park and open space use as a requirement of the park and open space use of the land use code. So um, I would hesitate to remove that without some sort of replacement. Um, because while we value, um, you know, our, our land use code requires dedications um, for a number of things that we value. And uh, you know, parks and open space are considered um a significant uh benefit to the community as well. And I'm sorry, but the room got muted, so I can't hear you.
Okay, I will, uh, in case folks didn't hear.
Mike, Mike is speaking now. Can you hear him, Kay?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I will happily find and share um those legal opinions, but um, because the county, to my knowledge, has never condemned out um a PUD. I'd be really worried about us doing so because of the potential fear it would create to other existing PUDs that we may do something similar to their PUD. I think we, we saw some of that um during other land use things in the past, but um, it would it, because it is a legal agreement already, um, for us to condemn that out would not be um, quick, easy, or without significant legal challenge.
And I did not mean to suggest that I wanted to condemn it. I was merely letting the public know that we had explored whether there was a mechanism for changing the use.
For that.
One second, but we didn't feel there was a viable mechanism for changing that use.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
That's my intent in asking these questions as well, just so the public is aware of this process. Um, and yeah, that's, that air is cleared and exactly.
Suzie, hi.
I'd like to go back to before the twenty sixteen, when this um subdivision was approved. And we had some, a lot of even public meetings about this subdivision over a period of many years. And I was at one when we spoke with um, well, the Division of Wildlife and looked at the elk corridor and the elk patterns and considered that. And that, uh, actually, our discussion in talking about how the elk migrate down Mill Creek Road to get to the valley floor. And then they also migrate above the fence and down the east side of the fence where the housing part has been deeded. And so because of that, actually, open space, I brought that to their attention. Because of that, they moved some of the houses. Some of the, you know, the easternmost house that borders Mill Creek Road, they moved it, I don't know how many feet. Maybe Kay remembers, or uh, west for that elk migration corridor. And so in the restrictive covenants for the subdivision, I mean, this went through the whole process of considering housing, wildlife, yeah, everything. Um, and so in their subdivision restrictive covenants, it says no formal structures or improvements because of wildlife environment and aesthetic factors. And so they okayed anything, you know, open air picnic with the roof, picnic table with the roof, recreational play equipment, but no formal structures. So you've got that issue too. Um, and it was um, deeded only for park and open space. So it's in the deed. And then um, also I wanted to point out that the twenty houses west, you can see the formalized driveway going in or off the highway. There's a place where those twenty houses are gonna be, if you can visualize that. And then the housing area that's further east, there's a driveway going in there. I think if, all these people, I was at this meeting when they talked about the dogs and the dog policy. I'm a dog owner and I consider dogs. These people are allowed to have dogs, plural, and, but they can't have a fenced yard. So their dogs can't just go out the door. Their dogs have to be leashed on the property. Their dogs can't go across to the valley floor. So we're talking about the housing area and the expensive housing area. And um, with dogs, they can't even keep their dog food or dog water outside because of the wildlife. So there's extensive verbiage in their subdivision covenants about bears and wildlife and training about bears. And they have really high um fines for dog violations. So we're considering this. You know, I'd like you to consider not just, I mean, the fact that the voters voted for a third of our open space funds. I'm all for uh housing. I really support that. We need that. But there is a housing area dedicated for this, whether it goes to the town from the county or what. Maybe the avenue would be to go and try to tweak that so that you can get access to that housing earlier. I think that's where the attention should go. Get that housing earlier and then you've got, I thought it was twenty, but I couldn't find the number in there. It just says dedicated housing. So I would say that's the, that would be the way to go from my view. And um, so it, it said a third of our budget, but it didn't say it couldn't take, we could want it to take our open space lands. And so then the final thing I would say is that to see this as a value of the park in between these two where people can't take their dogs and their kids and it's riding along the bike path and it's got, you know, everything that's just kind of natural, even our play structures are hopefully going to be natural. And the pollinator park, I think, is a huge environmental value as well. And we've had success with that. So I would like you to look at it as the value of it. It's only one acre.
Hi.
And, and also, I would like to resolve this. Because there's been a lot of time and energy and even the Super Bloom Company hired, we put together plans for years. We put them on hold. We're, you know, making a soft kind of landing right now for a while, but I would like it to be resolved.
Jared, did you have a comment?
I think it was addressed.
Okay, on, anything else on your mind, or should we hear from the public?
Um, well, also Commissioner Brown, I was gonna say um, too, that uh Greg and Rich were gonna walk you through the budget. At least is what we wanted to propose uh for us to receive permission to hopefully achieve and accomplish this year.
Let's go.
Thank you, Suzie, and then I'll have Greg and Rich take it away.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, you know, doing the budget on this is pretty difficult, not knowing how we can move forward. You know, a lot is up in the air. So um, we do have Super Bloom's full proposal. I picked out a few things that I think are accomplishable this year. Um, that whichever direction the park decides to go in the future won't uh impact any of that. It'll still leave us a blank enough canvas to adapt to what we choose.
And what is Super Bloom's, Greg?
Super Bloom is the uh company that we hired to do conceptual
Oh, okay.
renderings, what you saw there. They itemized everything that we need, created a, a, a full inventory list and estimate. So what we'd like to see this year, Janet already touched on it, but uh, you know, the irrigation and power to the site. We've been working with town of Telluride for a long time on that. Um, if we, they're, they're slated to get going in the spring, I believe.
They're ruling, um, they're doing the second reading of their ordinance. They'll provide the tap fee waiver on uh April first.
Mm-hmm. So with that tap fee waiver, I mean, that saves us thirty thousand dollars right there if it does happen. Um, we will have to put a transformer in, which will be around twelve thousand dollars, which isn't finalized now, but that's kind of the way this discussion's going. Um, we were going back and forth on putting an irrigation system, but we think we can hold off on that. And we want to do something similar to what we did to the south side of the park, grading it. We, we buried those structures, but the north end has exposed rocks. It's got a wood pile. It's all uneven. There's divots. We'd like to grade that. Um, we, with that, you know, we can do some soil preparation, putting some topsoil in, getting ready for the irrigation system. So if we got that topsoil settled, um, we would have the opportunity next year to start plantings. Um, and this year we could do the grass portion. So after we grade everything, has to be reseeded. So we could add that, that grass seed in. Um, we were throwing around, we think it would be nice to get the restroom screen up, so we don't just have like an ugly porta potty view uh visible from the road. So that would just be like a visibility screen around the sides of it. Um, a shade, the shade structure, which would be, you know, for the picnic tables, so the community can enjoy sitting out there, not in direct sunlight. Um, maybe a couple more picnic tables, a fence on the Mill Creek Road portion of the park. Just to uh, you know, you get some problems of cars parking in the grass and just to kind of uh direct the traffic through a single point. And uh, with that fencing would come some gates. So um, yeah, that, we pared that down. It's, it's hard to put a number out and to button it all down, but that can be paired up or down. However, we decide to proceed. Um, yeah.
Greg, the only thing I have to add is that we explored extensively the cost of if we were to just put tanks, water tanks out there and forego uh a, a real irrigation system. And ironically, it ended up very, very close. And so with the tap fee waiver, if that is finally approved, this would actually be less expensive as a means to route the not just to root the plants and everything, um, than the water tank system was going to be. But it would also then provide the ongoing ability to have water, fresh water there for users of that area.
Yeah, from the numbers I see, the best, the majority of the cost is actually in the irrigation itself, not in the method of getting the water. So, um, yeah, I, I know that's really brief and um, do you guys have any questions? I anticipate you will, but.
Um, I, so I'm a little unclear because the um PowerPoint or the screen shifted. But you're proposing today, it's the restroom screen, it's from that line. You're proposing today, it's the restroom screen. It's from that line, structures and bridges. What, what, what?
It's everything up here. So, yes, yes.
And that does include your irrigation system.
The irrigation I left out. Um, I just wanted to put that figure in there so you guys know the future cost of it, but, uh, that is left out. Yeah.
Okay. Can you just scroll up so I can see where the 277,000 is coming from, all the elements?
So that is the grand total of each element. So, um, the grading subtotal would be about one.
The top, there we go. A hundred and seventy-five thousand for soil preparation and fine grading. That's the big number this year.
That's the big number. Yeah, that would bring in a lot of topsoil. The soil out there is very rocky. It's not gonna be great to grow in. Um, so that would be a lot of topsoil.
But of course, though, Commissioner Brown, that's an estimate. We would issue an RFP and see what that actual number is, but that's just a, an estimate.
That's the estimate that Super Bloom gave us. I personally feel like that number could come down a lot if we didn't do this all at once. So.
And the idea of, I understand the grading to make it level and to, um, cover up, you know, dangerous obstacles or something like that, but could we have a park that isn't like a lawn that is irrigated? Could we have it be more rough and natural that, and that would save water, that would save a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? Have you thought about that?
We have. Um, I mean, one of the, the big reasons we included that is that is what the survey said. You know, the results said the people were looking for a pollinator garden. Um, so that's why we included it. That being said, you know, we are malleable.
Well, and also Commissioner Brown, to that point, um, I just wanted to add that the whole intent initially wa- was to leave that site as natural as possible. So, you know, we're looking at grading where we feel it's necessary to make it safe. We're not looking to have this perfect
Yeah.
manicured, you know, lawn. I mean, you know, yes, if we receive future permission down the road to actually put in our pathways and our plantings, it's going to be a more refined site. But for now, we're just looking to, for safety components and like Greg said, to clean up the boulders and the rocks that currently exist that need to be removed.
And when we say grass, it's not gonna look like someone's lawn, like, you know, the outfield in a stadium. Um, we're talking about like high altitude meadow mixes and soil mix. So these are like naturally growing grasses in the area.
So I think it's important to also mention that once soil is disturbed, it's really important to plant. Otherwise, you're just inviting invasive weeds and.
Correct. And erosion. Um, so the reason we included that this year is for those reasons, but also to get an irrigation system, future, you know, that soil would have to be in place. You can't put the irrigation in first and then go back and do that later.
I think it might be helpful. I know it's just very, a very con, like conceptual
Right.
highlight, kind of just like first go at this, but could we look at the conceptual plan again, just the schematic to have an idea of like what, you know, phase one would address. Um, well.
Yeah, the renderings that you're gonna see right now represent everything. So that's the finished product. So we've just been phasing this in slowly but surely. Um, you know, and last summer, in addition to, um, the county commissioners allowing us to do the grading on the south side portion, Rich and his crew were out there and, uh, they built a bridge over the creek. They created a pathway with woodchips. They outlined the pathway with some stone. Um, I mean, Rich, you can go into more detail, but you know, our staff has done as much in-house as possible. So we do look to call back the figures so that, uh, we don't have to hire contractors.
Yeah, Rich Hamilton, Park Supervisor. Uh, we also did a little over $10,000 worth of arborist work already to make all those trees safe. So no one gets hurt by any windfall from dead branches. Uh, we have some material on site that we've been storing for many years. It's some spruce and fir logs that we hope to utilize in the park in various ways. And, uh, in addition to picnic tables, um, that we put out there. Um, we also, our staff collected a lot of the wildflower and grass seeds that we currently put down on the south part of the parcel that was graded last year.
Down Valley?
Some from Down Valley Park, some from up in Broadville, some everywhere I go, I am, uh, I'm Richie Appleseed. Um, so we do a lot of stuff in-house and we try to keep it native, all of our mixes and our choices for shrubs and trees in the future for screening will be native, um, drought tolerant, won't require a ton of irrigation except for that initial few years to get them established.
It's gonna be a place to try and, and quality.
And the, the shade structure, sorry, that's proposed right now, is that kind of like what we're looking at here with the conceptual shade structure? What, or would that be potentially like moved?
Well, we have that proposed, um, for the northeast corner again, that can be moved anywhere, but yeah, it's open-ended. So it'd just be, it's not considered a permanent structure or deemed permanent. You know, it'd just be, um, a roof with, uh, open sides just to provide some, uh, shading ability for picnickers.
Um, and we all know, like, the best time to plant a tree was yesterday, right? How many trees do you anticipate? Like if the grand plan came to fruition, how many trees approximately would be planted on site? And, you know, that be?
Um.
We, we have, yeah, we have a very, as Rich mentioned, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to have pollinator garden and gardens and drought resistant plantings, which will probably take two to three years to get established. We do have a, an itemized list of shrubs, planting, plantings, et cetera. Um, I mean, there are, there are hundreds in the mix, no pun intended.
And the majority of trees would be the screening between the highway and the park to provide a a, a nice environment for the families that were using it.
Um, when you graded the south side, how much did that cost last year? I thought that was just not much.
It was minimal. It was just under $5,000.
That's right. Um, so the grading, this, that didn't include any topsoil.
Okay.
This would also potentially include removing, um, a old power pole, maybe. Uh, we haven't decided if we're leaving or taking it out. These are just the estimates, like this is the, the grand view from Super Bloom includes everything. Um, but yeah, that didn't include the soil. The soil is, is a lot of that cost. Uh, the grading is, is, you know, it would be similar to last year if it was just doing the same thing.
Okay. So you would grade the rest of the property and put topsoil down and not irrigate it, but put, um, drought resistant, native seeds down and gra- grass and, um, flowers and so forth.
Right. And, uh, all of that would be used later. We're just not talking tree plantings, any, you know, uh, specialized, uh, plants, just grass mixes, just to stop your, uh, you know, erosion.
Okay. And can you remind me about parking? What, um, is envisioned for parking? I think I heard you say dedicated park. I didn't know if that meant parking or park or?
Well, the parking, the way it exists right now, it would remain that way. It would just be the parallel parking. So the way it is on Mill Creek Road, um, and we've spoken with Ryan Rigetti, our Road and Bridge Superintendent. And that was his preference to leave it as is, you know, and I mentioned dedicated parking. It's sort of that, um, Rich and his crew put some boulders out there just to delineate where the parking should exist, because we did have people actually parking onto the grassy area. So we're just keeping them, uh, restricted to the road surface.
So no additional parking? It would just be more about managing the parking or?
Right. And that's, yes, and Commissioner Brown, that's why I purposely, um, had that question in the survey as far as how would people intend to get to the park site? Are they driving, walking, biking, taking the bus, et cetera, just to kind of factor that in?
And what was the response?
Uh, biking was the top response.
Yeah.
Um, followed by walking, if I remember correctly. Thanks, next page.
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, it was biking first, walking and driving, uh, walking, then driving, um, and then other was, um, specified with bus. So bicycling was the number one answer at 75%.
Have you guys considered sending out an, another survey? To get like a really real time response on what the public right now would like to see there and?
Um, well, I can certainly do that. And, you know, that was one of the, uh, points or items we wanted to discuss today because yes, the survey is five years old. So, um, I mean, I personally haven't had any feedback. I mean, our team has received positive feedback from the community as far as what we've done so far and when they've been out at the site and people have stopped by. You know, just to be appreciative of the effort being put forward, but, um, would certainly do that.
I think it would help just affirm the intended uses and what people want to see there. I mean, everything that was, has been laid out makes a lot of sense to me personally. I've used the already improved park several times, I will say, um, and just from perspective of, um, someone who is a commuter, uh, you know, I often pull into Mill Creek just to walk my dog or my, get my kids out of the car. Um, and as we know, the valley floor isn't necessarily that friendly of a place to let your wild, um, offspring run around necessarily or their, or your, um, animals. And, I mean, I, I really do see the, how this will evolve into a really beneficial amenity for the community. Um, since I'm kind of going beat poetic here. I also just want to commend you all for the work that you're doing with parks and open space. And once again, as a west end resident who is commuting to the east end specifically through the pandemic and having young children, the Down Valley and Placerville Parks have been very much, um, a place of gathering that I've noticed for a lot of families who are missing kind of community and a place to be able to find vitality and connection. Um, and I think they serve so much more than just like forms of recreation or even, um, you know, preserving open space at, they're so critical for the community. Uh, and so when we're looking at the potentiality of more housing in that area and just our region growing over time, um, I think we really will look back at this moment and see that the development of this park could, will have been extremely beneficial to quality of life. So I, I do see that. Um, and I, I think that the vision is good. It makes sense to me. Um, even just having a water filling station from the, the bike recreators utilizing Mill Creek. Um, just from my lived experience, I've walked into the Shell Station many a times to fill my camel back to ride Mill Creek. Um, and I don't know if they always totally appreciate that. Try to like buy a cliff bar also on doing it, but just to serve public benefit, um, and just give a place for people to have a place of reprieve outside of the town of Telly Ride. Um, but, uh, you know, within the thorough frair of heading Down Valley, makes sense.
Okay. No, thank you, Commissioner Gleason. We can certainly do another survey. But I think for what we're proposing this year, these items need to happen regardless of those survey results. Cause this is just the basic to get that site established and to move forward. Um, so I think regardless of survey results, because this is, you know, prior to actual plantings, prior to the structure um, and prior to the pathways, um, these steps need to kind of happen regardless. That's my thought.
The, and that makes all the sense in the world. Absolutely. I think moving forward to really like solidify a vision coming from the public is, is important to revisit a survey. So I would certainly give that direction.
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. I agree.
And, uh, one thing that I don't think we mentioned today, but part of, uh, this conceptual plan also includes, uh, some services for bicyclists. So there is a bike repair station with, that'll have tools with the bike rack. So you, you know, chain comes off, you can do a little work on your bike as well.
Suzy? Uh, you need the mic.
Okay. When did we start working with Super Bloom? I mean, cause we?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So we've been through several iterations of what the concept of this park is with considerations from the survey, but also, you know, like at, at one point we were gonna have, um, the dog park in that back corner. And then so you might want to look back through or maybe we could resend all the conceptual development. So you can see, you know, all the different considerations that went in based on the survey and other comments and other. So, um, just for your information, because I think that was all happening before either of you were on commission. So it, that would be good.
Well, as I mentioned though, the dog park area is what morphed into the bike skills track. That's the only change.
Okay. And you've, just to clarify, you said that the dog park, there just isn't enough space for a suitable dog park? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we just felt, um, and again, if people want it to return to that, um, but we just felt physically that area, that designated area was small.
I understand.
I mean, so for people who really want their dogs to run and, you know, and throw a ball, it, uh, it was sort of uh, too small and too contained.
Okay. As you said, it's only one acre.
Yes.
And that one acre will be a dog friendly area as a whole.
And it works really well at the Down Valley Park. You have, you know, a voice command for your dogs. It's, it's, it's an amazing thing nowadays that dogs are just under voice command and doing well. But do we imagine that'll be the same?
Uh, the PUD may dictate otherwise, but, um, I'm, I'm in favor of voice commit, strict voice command and, or leash.
PUD stated that this area will not be under the covenants of the PUD. And, and maybe the, maybe the, uh, Housing Authority won't, won't be.
I think that's a detail we can work out. But it is, it's, I'm happy that dogs will be allowed and that there will be a, you know, rules in place to manage them and protect the wildlife. Um, so I want to thank you also for your patience, because I was the one that kind of threw a wrench in this a couple of years ago. Um, when I learned about this, um, at a time which continues of great concern about housing. And I feel very much, um, rea- not, I guess reassured, I'll say, to know that it is impractical and maybe even not legal to change that site to housing. Um, Suzy, I will say that I've had various conversations with various people about accelerating the, um, turning over of the housing parcel at the east end to the county with no movement at all. Sadly, I don't think that is gonna happen. Um, but we definitely have explored that and tried to, um, you know, make that happen. And again, we don't want to be getting into legal issues over any of this. So that, um, this kind of is what it is. Um, I, um, I have not myself he- heard any positive feedback from the community, uh, in terms of a desire for the park or in terms of using it right now. Um, I have only heard from people, not many, but people who had read in the paper over the last couple of years about my concerns about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this park in support of not spending the money. And so I, um, Galina, you really, um, with what you said about your own use of that space and kind of the perspective of a as a commuter and a young mom, mom, young mom with young kids. I mean, anyway, I mean, that's really, that's really, um, that's really helpful. Um, and I know I lived Down Valley for years with little boys and we were in those parks ourselves. So, um, I hadn't thought about it in quite the way you, you described today, though. So that was super helpful. But get, you know, given the fact that I haven't heard from the public about, yes, please, where's this park we want it? And on the other hand, I've heard what are we even thinking? I do think it'll be useful to, you know, send out a survey and, um, doesn't have to take um, forever. I'm just thinking, do we need that survey before we move forward with what you're saying with this sort of foundational work?
Well, and that's my thought is that regardless of how the public responds, it is foundational work, which would need to happen regardless. But are there any specific questions though, that the county commissioners feel should be addressed that weren't addressed or, you know, in the initial survey? And I can share those questions with you, because.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I, I definitely would like to have some input on that because I used to be in market research for 30 years. And so I know that the way you frame a question is really important. Um, and, you know, for example, I would frame it as we have, you know, we have determined that there is no other, you know, legal use. This is not the right word, but maybe more help us for this park or for this space other than a park or open space. With, you know, i.e. this cannot be used for housing or whatever other, you know, office buildings or anything else. And knowing that, you know, how do you feel about the county investing some rough number into this park? Um, and then maybe, and we can go on about, we can talk about. Um, and then maybe, and we can go on about, we can talk about what that survey would look like. But I do think it's really important that we frame the question and that we provide an opportunity for people to say, I still don't think it's a great idea. And obviously weigh that with all everything we know about it. I'm not saying the public, we're going to make this decision with survey results, but I do think it's important to, to start with the broader question and then narrow it down.
So then is your, is it the direction of the county commissioners then that we hold off on our proposal for this year until those survey results are tabulated or can we move forward?
No, I will say though, that I, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is giving me pause um, for foundational work um, without the survey and without a, a, a agreed upon plan. And I'm just wondering if that could be pared back at all. And I know you said that's a five-year-old estimate.
Well, no, that's a current estimate. But again, we would issue an RFP though and see, you know, how that number comes back.
Five years ago is half of that.
Yeah.
As the longer we wait, this project just keeps getting more and more expensive. But yeah, I, I feel like we can do some grading work without the hundred seventy-five thousand of soil and all that. I think we can just bring the north half to meet the standard of the south half.
That's great. That's great. That would make, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable about moving ahead. You're saying we have public comment?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you don't have to take public comment when you're still discussing this. One of the points I wanted to make sure that we convey in that survey is that if we were not to continue any investment in this park, it's not as though those funds could be used for other general accounting purposes, because this is only their specific mill levies fund that can only be spent on parks and open space. So I, I think sometimes the public misunderstands that like, oh, if you don't spend it there, then that's more money to spend on housing. And that's not the case. Because these funds are restricted specifically for the development of these types of facilities. And they do have the fund in their budget to accommodate it.
That crossed my mind as well. And I think that's another important point to make as we frame the survey. Thanks, Mike.
And could I, could I back up? Because I feel like we started talking about a bunch of different things. First off was Janet's request of moving forward with just these, these first kind of foundational pieces that would be written necessary regardless of how it's used, including its current use to increase the safety. Obviously, we heard you clearly about the concern on that larger dollar amount. And once those bids come back in before obviously anything's awarded, we'll check back in on those amounts with you.
But it sounded like Greg could adjust the bit or the RFP two, so that it maybe wasn't quite as extensive. Is that possible?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we can also put it out, you know, for what we need, what Super Bloom called for. And I have a feeling the number can come in lower also than that one seventy-five. So with your direction, we can go either way.
Here's the thing. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not a landscaper. Actually, you have a degree in this, Galena. So maybe you could weigh in, but I, I would like to spend the, I, I would, I'd like to spend the minimal amount to do the appropriate work to lay the foundation for this park. But yeah, so do you have something else to say that maybe is more articulate?
Well, I mean, I, I hear you there.
Yeah.
Agree to an extent, but actually having run a landscaping company and down this kind, well, not this extensive of work, but there is a certain amount of man, woman hours and with, with land work, it, it's, it's expensive and especially bringing in topsoil. I mean, we're talking about several dump trucks full of topsoil, I would imagine, to actually do the grading work that is necessary here. So I think we just need to be prepared that this is gonna cost a certain amount of money just to lay the foundation here. So I don't want to kind of set like an unreal expectation that this cost could get lowered by a significant amount, just knowing what these things cost.
Well, and you do and I don't, so I appreciate.
And I guess just from a kind of naturalist standpoint and knowing the amount of effort and funding that the county puts into um, invasive weed control and I, I, I actually kind of if I'm going to question something on the budget line items, I'm wondering like really what that revegetation plan looks like. And I just want to make sure that would be executed well, so that we're not running into an invasive weed issue that is going to need more resources down the road to, to mitigate before there's further plantings.
Well, and our, our Noxious Weed Manager is also very much involved in this project. So
She has a revegetation plan that we follow.
Yeah.
And the whole south end last year, that was completely bare. That was all dirt and that was the revegetation took in a couple of months.
And I appreciate that rich apple seed is out there collecting seeds to spread. And I mean, just yeah, it's very evident looking at the plantings in any of the county owned parks that there's a, a lot of attention and foresight and thought put into that. And it, and it in turn creates a lot of beauty and um, really even just biodiversity in the, in the plantings. And this is me just coming from a landscaping and um, kind of restoration ecology background. But um, I, I think it's just important that that is a priority.
Absolutely.
But I hear your, you know, caution and oh, you know, the, that line item is it's high.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think it's fairly reasonable thinking about regrading a portion of an acre.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that I really do. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, anybody else in the room have something to share or should we go to public comment? And I know we don't have to.
Public comment. I'd like to, to bifurcate the two issues and get your direction on both.
That sounds great. Okay. Um, Mr. Tulli, you were the first to raise your hand. Um, you have three minutes beginning now to speak about the Mill Creek Park.
Uh, thank you, Chair Brown. Um, I do have um, uh, somewhat ad hoc extensive lay experience in um, some of these uh, landscape issues. Uh, I graduated from high school half a year early and spent two seasons before I started um, college in the fall of nineteen eighty-two in Western Massachusetts, planting trees, uh, crew leader the second year, probably roughly a hundred years, excuse me, a hundred thousand trees. Um, spaced out at uh, ten feet apiece. Um, I'm also a certified tree steward for the um, uh, city of Seattle and uh, completed uh, the uh, most of the program of a native plant steward uh, program, similar one did both similar to the master gardener's program, uh, you know, forty hours of classroom training and a project. Though I think the additional energy that needs to go into this and Suzie St. Ange was, I think I'm approaching this diplomatically. Is looking at the housing of that parcel. This also goes to the society turn parcel in the hospital district, both of which have been inappropriate delayed. And that's the energy to, uh, I think to spend time on. Yeah, I think for a project of this scale, um, the public need is well demonstrated. I was one of the people who suggested a dog park. Um, it's a big, big, big planning uh, practice. Uh, advocacy effort of mine to uh, make sure that all alternatives are considered to some fashion that are mentioned to the public. And I thank uh, Ms. Task for doing so, and I completely accept the rationale. Uh, my current use is off-leash dog and uh, that may be able to be preserved. Uh, that is, I run my dog up the road. And there are quite a number of people who've used this park, um, as has uh, Ms. Gleason, Commissioner Gleason. Um, people just chill. A, a lot of people run up the um, the Mill Creek Road. Quite a number of people do that. Uh, and it would be nice to uh, retain the ability to run my dog uh, up the road and to have uh, access to the creek water. If that's a kind of a very detailed point, but perhaps Kay can pull that off. And you know, again, you know, the uh, uh, the housing, uh, whole housing process was and is still problematic out there. And uh,
Three minutes.
In the year of self censorship, I will not speak more. And but I do thank uh, Ms. St. Ange for her, her comments in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. John Wontropski, um, your hand is raised and you have three minutes beginning now to address the Mill Creek Park.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I was just trying to start my video. I don't think that's allowed. Um, great conversation. I've uh, looked at this piece of property, think it's an interesting thing that you guys are trying to design something by committee um, from scratch. It's gotta be difficult. I just wanted to raise four groups that I think you guys should consult with, or you may have already um, in this conversation. One is Telluride Town Park. I worked in Telluride Town Park for nine years. It is a very pressured, very programmed area. And I believe that this is an opportunity to take some pressure off of that park. And I haven't heard them or what's going on down there or mentioned at all. Um, second is the Telluride Mountain Club. As a few people have alluded, there's a lot of mountain making being developed up in the upper Mill Creek area. It's kind of a, a series of loops. Right now, the trailhead is up, up Mill Creek, the dirt part of Mill Creek Road at the first uh, switchback. And I feel like that trailhead could be moved down to where the current proposed park is. Um, which can have maps, bike stations, place to get out of the weather, et cetera. Um, the third is possibly talking to the Telluride Adaptive Sports Program. Um, this is a very accessible piece of property and we could make it hyper accessible to handicap folks. Um, in a way that say the Ridgeway State Park, I don't know if you knew this, but Ridgway State Park is one of the more leading state parks, both in Colorado and the nation for handicap accessibility. And I feel like this is an opportunity to do something like that. We don't have anything like that in the county. You know, we're talking pollinator garden, the one down alley isn't particularly handicap accessible. So this could be. And the last group I would suggest talking with is SMART. I believe that a westbound bus stop at the park is key to this. There is room on the eastbound lane to put in a bus stop, but some to put a bus stop in westbound is going to require some sort of reconfiguration of the bike path. And if there is no bus stop out there with the frequent service that we have out to the park, it's just going to be a traffic generator. And I don't think that's what uh, you guys want to do. Um, thanks very much for your time. This is a really amazing project. Thank you for your work on it.
Thanks, John.
Do you want to address the SMART question, Janet?
Uh, yeah, um, I, I mentioned earlier that I had had conversations with SMART, just as far as um, designating a bus stop area out there. And then John also, I, and to the commissioners, um, I have had conversations with Courtney Stocelli at TASP just to see how the county can work with TASP, because we do provide them with some community support funding each year, but also physically with our park sites, the fairgrounds, how we can work together, um, just to make things more accessible to their uh, client base. So I have had those conversations.
Thank you, Janet. Mike, did you want to?
Thanks. Um, so I wanted to come back and see if the commissioners were comfortable giving direction to move forward on these initial pieces, getting these projects, the parts that are not done in-house out to RFP, so that we can see what the costs are likely to be before, and then that'll be a decision at that point about how much you want to authorize or scale back. And then the second part will be a real uh, question to have is for what details of the survey or timing.
Okay. I am comfortable with uh, the team going ahead and submitting or developing RFPs so that we can get the work that you've outlined done this summer.
Um, well, on that.
Are, are you as well, Galena?
I, I am. Yep.
Okay. Did you want to comment on that?
Um, no, I, I think pretty clear on it.
Okay.
This point, yeah.
And then the second question?
Is related to the, the new survey idea. Um, I believe I heard support from both of you for going back out to the public to resurvey on desired uses.
Yes, from me.
When, um, how long would you like that survey open? Um, and then we can, I don't think we need to workshop the questions, but when Janet provides you previous surveys, um, I think we can meet very soon to refine and get a survey out to public. My question was really, when do you want the survey out to the public and how long do you want it out for?
Yeah, and the initial survey I did five years ago, I had out for three months.
Yeah, I support that. I mean, considering we've got off season coming up and um, I, I would like it to be open long enough so people feel that they had the opportunity to participate. Um, three months seems like a reasonable amount of time. What are your thoughts, Sam?
I, I think that's actually maybe even longer than we need. Um, but backing up, I mean, maybe two months would be enough. Uh, we could use the off season to develop the survey and then launch it. Um, mid, well, I'd say more like mid-June when
Well, the only reason I suggest May is that school's still in session. You still have um, all your families here before potentially summer vacations or and then also for we, we have second homeowners who are here at different times of the year. So I'd like to try and still capture if we have ones that uh, leave during the summer and then those that are coming for the summertime.
So maybe May, June, July, is that?
I was just thinking, May, June.
Um, I would take, I would take it at least into the middle of July, since a lot of people show up at Fourth of July.
Okay.
Um, I, I mean, but what we're looking to consider today really isn't contingent on the survey results. And so I, I don't see the harm in leaving it open long enough that we really have the opportunity for good engagement. So I would support it going into July, knowing that there are a lot of second homeowners that come into town and ta, you know, are tuned in suddenly when they're here.
Yeah. So maybe we should, if you think, if you're suggesting we start it as early as May first to capture the families who may leave for the summer, why don't we do May, June, July? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, but now I'm just thinking about when with, with those results. So I'm thinking about, once you get this work done for the summer, I'm assuming the next step is to try to figure out what more significant features we want to include, right? And that's what the survey will help direct. So if that survey finishes up at the end of July and we have time to digest the results, is that appropriate timeline for you all for the next phase of planning?
Uh, sure, absolutely. We can
Doesn't hold you up.
No, I mean, if we're allowed to move forward with what we're proposing today and uh, like you said, issue some RFPs, really um, get some hard numbers here, confirm or deny what's being proposed, you know, as far as the figures.
Okay. So that this is the, the survey taking place May, June, July would not hold up any further.
I don't think so, because this is foundational work, which needs to occur regardless.
Okay, great. I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The grinding wheels of government.
Until we meet again.
Does this, this doesn't necessitate any sort of motion. It says that on the agenda, but
Policy or expenditure before you today, but no motion necessary. Just, we wanted that staff direction. Thank you. And may, may we take a three-minute break?
We sure can. And Eco Action Partners, I'm sorry, not on time. Um, but it's nice to see you here. So we'll take a quick break. It is eleven oh two. Shall we come back at eleven oh eight, eleven oh five? We'll come back as soon as we can. Okay. Thank you. We'll come back as soon as we can. Okay, thank you. Yeah. We are back. It is now eleven oh seven. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth. We are on item number sixty. Consideration of Eco Action Partners' proposal between the district, San Miguel County Green Grant Program. Present in the room, we have Star Jameson, our Natural Resources Climate Resilience Director, as well as a couple of fine people from Eco Action Partners who will introduce themselves when they are ready to speak. Star, take it away.
Hi, thanks, Commissioners. I hope this is going to be less than thirty minutes, but just in case. This is our third discussion on the Green Grants Program and our second discussion ended with what it would look like, a breakdown of the budget, understanding the percentages. And so Emma Jorona, who's here with us, she provided the breakdown for the budget, which I have here, which ended up at a total of ten thousand dollars, which we would be taking out of our rent fund for the Green Grant Program. Here I just highlighted some things, what the administrative fee represents. I had mentioned before how this may just cost more to start this program in the beginning and then potentially down the road, we would have everything in place to then potentially go down in cost. Multiple benefits for this. Ultimately, we want to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and this would help our citizens of San Miguel County do that by providing them just some extra funding for their projects. As far as the timeline goes, this will just follow the same as the Telluride Green Grants. I had asked if there was something we could do a bit sooner, but for their sake of including the whole region this year, their work's going to be the workload's going to be a lot more, having multiple jurisdictions in here. And so keeping everyone on the same timeframe will allow a more smooth process for Eco Action Partners. And then here, you know, just thinking about the benefit for us, just really looking through their proposal here and their scope of work, these are all the things that I just realized were, you know, going to be a lot of work. And if you're already doing it with other municipalities and already proven that this is a successful program on Telluride, then it just makes sense to move it forward and and to not recreate the wheel. So, um, yeah, does anyone have any questions regarding this program and proposal?
If you don't, I can go ahead.
Go ahead. My, my questions actually are more for Eco Action, if you want to start.
Oh, okay. Well, why don't we hear from Eco Action Partners? If you'd like to, do you have anything to share or you're just here to answer questions?
I think just here to answer questions. We're really excited for this opportunity and to expand this program. As Star mentioned, there's a lot of benefits, so happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm really excited too, and I appreciate that we have had three meetings on this because it's helped us to understand sort of the benefits of of the program overall. And then we talked about whether something we wanted to run or you wanted to run. And I think it makes absolute sense in my mind for Eco Action Partners to manage this for the reasons that Star said. And now that I have a better understanding of the ten thousand, well, really the ten percent, that also seems very fair to me. I think the only thing that actually kind of caught our attention was the fact that our fee was ten percent and the town of Telluride was five point three percent. But you've done a wonderful job of explaining that this is, these are startup costs for us and that makes that makes good sense to me. When I read through your memo, the only question that I had was it sounded pretty time consuming for you all, your reporting on this, you know, that you were going to track your hours, which I appreciate, but then you were going to provide each invoice will be accompanied by a narrative report with a breakdown of activities, milestones and expenditures. I just, you know, I trust you, you know, and we know the work that you've outlined that you're going to be doing. So I would just say if it's okay with everybody else here in the room, that you not spend too much time on that reporting part of it.
We appreciate that. Always better to do the work than report the work.
That's what, yeah, I mean, there'll be, obviously you'll track your hours so that we can get an understanding of that and make a few notes, but I don't expect to have a long report. Does anyone feel differently about that in this room?
I do not. Yeah, okay.
Galina?
Um, I guess, just looking into the future, I just had some questions about how you might anticipate these admin fees could reduce after the program is established. And I know this is conceptual at this point, but I just kind of wanted to get a grasp on that.
Definitely. I think a big piece of this initial kickoff is going to be getting the word out there about this program to the communities that haven't participated in it before. And what we've seen in Telluride, it's as the program has continued over five years, people know about it and it's more commonplace. And so the outreach efforts have been able to decrease a bit as word of mouth spreads and more people are aware of the program. So definitely that marketing and outreach piece will be easier once it's an established program.
Which, by the way, that marketing and outreach will include driving to things like the Norwood rodeo and flying there and being physically, you know, in these locations to do in-person outreach and not just like post a flyer at one place or do one radio spot.
That's great.
And the other piece is just setting up the like software, adding additional questions that the county wants to have in the application. Getting the application all set up and ready to go is going to take some upfront time. And setting up a committee for the county in the same way that Telluride has the Ecology Commission. Certain members sit on the committee to make those decisions. All of that, once it's established, will be easier in year two.
And Star, who do you suggest, how would we structure our committee? Decision Committee?
I asked Darren at the town and it's an ecology, a town council member and Darren, correct? And so I was thinking probably something similar. And I asked Matt Gonzalez a couple of days ago and he's like, well, I don't know if I need to be on the committee. But he didn't say no. But I was hoping that a Commissioner and myself and potentially another staff member.
I think we've talked to the town of Norwood as well about the Green Grants Program and they're excited for expansion there. And just making sure that we have representatives from our various communities, so it's not like heavily weighted towards one end of San Miguel County or the other, but that there's just like a person on the committee that represents each like population center. Be conscious of that.
That would be great to have someone from Norwood.
Well, we have someone from Norwood sitting right here who happens to be a Commissioner.
Well, I, I will maybe in consort with Eco Action, touch base with the town of Norwood and their Board of Trustees. I mean, I could see the value in having someone from the town of Norwood actually sitting on that committee because I think they're you know, just from their potent potential outreach capability, a direct line of communication could be really good there. We would love your support in finding the right person. Yeah, Sarah Owens has mentioned that she could be available, but if there's a correct person. Yeah, and that doesn't mean I wouldn't be willing and enthusiastic about potentially sitting on the committee, but yeah.
Nice, thank you. Do you have any sense of how much the software sharing might cost? Because I noticed that was identified as a separate item that we would pay in addition to the ten percent.
Yes, so software, right now, town of Telluride has paid for this next year already because that was the invoice schedule. And so we would have to refund a portion of that. Now, only a portion of that would come from San Miguel County. Also, there'd be a contribution from San Juan County and Yarra County. It's fifteen thousand annually and we might need to upgrade to the next plan up for an additional six hundred dollars a year. Fifteen hundred, sorry. Thank you, Star, for catching me. Okay, no, fifteen hundred. We may, might have to upgrade for an additional six hundred, but I think preliminary, it looks like we can get away with using the same plan we're on now.
Great, that's not a deal breaker.
Yeah.
And then just one kind of political question too. On page two, we talk about how under three A, we'll ensure broad awareness of the new program across all of San Miguel County, including underrepresented communities and small businesses. Is that language that we maybe don't want to include, given the current political climate, or is that important?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I think underrepresented doesn't necessarily mean I don't know if that would flag. I don't know if that would, if underrepresented would flag.
I'm sure you thought this through in regards to all of the work you're doing. So I just wanted to call that out as something to consider how important it was and if it was at all a concern.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm not super concerned about.
I don't think so. And I think yeah, that is our goal either way and how we market it, we can be more cautious about that language and the more public facing documents. But at least for this proposal.
It makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, for what it's worth, I think that's really important that we understand that that is part of the outreach process. Yeah, to get the word out to everyone.
Okay, what are next steps?
The next steps would be for myself, we need to get this into a contract through our professional services agreement. And then go, I guess, just fall into the timeline that they have.
Great. So no motion needed right now. We'll wait until there's a contract to approve?
Yeah, I, I think we can get that contract pulled together and put it on a consent agenda once we have that.
Great. Thank you. Yay. More progress.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your good work. Okay, thank you, Star. We are now moving on to item seven. Affordable housing books. Did I miss something? Oh, you know what? I'm off Zoom. There we go. Oh, hi. I'm, didn't see whose hand went up first, but since Kim Wheels is smiling at me, she gets to go first. Kim, you have three minutes to address this agenda item.
Thank you. And I just wanted to really quickly express my appreciation for San Miguel County. Putting forth rent funds for this program, supporting it. It's been challenging over the years when we've had potential applicants ask to apply and are just outside of Telluride's town limits. So there's definitely been a need for it for a long time and really appreciative and grateful and excited to bring it forth to the rest of the region. So just wanted to say thank you.
You are so welcome and thank you for all that you're doing to make this happen. Doug Thule, you have three minutes to address this agenda item beginning now.
I gotta wait till we get unmuted. Doug Thule, San Miguel County. Yeah, there is a lot of potential and unrealized potential in Eco Action. I'm certainly aware of Kim's efforts in energy mitigation as part of the ongoing least cost planning approach in the utility industry. That's an approach that least cost planning approach has a lot of applicability. I've argued for that in a number of areas. I was fortunate enough to know somebody who fairly well-developed and published a least cost planning transportation approach. And I would encourage Ms. Brown to become familiar with that on a working basis, based on her academic experience. There's one specific area, this is one of an area of expertise of Ms. Jameson, and that is native plant restoration as opposed to.
About the Green Grants Program here, can you please confine your comments not, yeah, to the Green Grant?
That's a possible subject and for that. And it's actually at play in the town of Telluride with an intergovernmental agreement on weed services there. Just one subject for maybe a place to put a little bit of focus on in the Green Grants Program. We can figure out a way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on now to item seven, affordable housing updates. Do we have an update? We had one last week.
The only update that I would share with commissioners is kind of as a result of last week's discussion. We have again reached out to the LMPOA board. We are, Mike and I are attending meeting of the LMPOA board next week to further discuss our ideas and here they have other ideas from that group. But again, we, we had some previous outreach and we just kind of re-engaged with that and got invited to the meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know that we are proceeding with that. Otherwise, we did have a meeting this week with Wright Water Engineers about our efforts with the MOU with San Bernardo HLA. And those continue. We're trying to navigate getting a path to do some drilling of a test well this summer and getting that MOU hammered out. So a lot of background info, but I just wanted you all to be aware.
Great. I have a question about the Housing Coordinator. Did that, did that ever come to fruition?
That position has come to fruition. We are super excited that Andrea Azaria will be starting with us next week. And so as you all come in next week, I hope to introduce her potentially at next week's meeting. And hopefully not make her attend the whole meeting, but it'll, it'll be good to have her in next week. And then I'm kind of planning some research projects for her, some reading of some items that she's going to need to know and super excited to get her on board. She will, will have a little bit of pre-planned vacation, so we'll be kind of as I have. As I have, pre-planned vacation that will happen over spring break. Um, but we'll, so we'll be working through that and uh. Yeah, really excited to have her on board and uh, start pushing these with a little bit more uh, oomph.
That's great news. I'm looking forward to meeting Andrea. Thank you.
The only other thing I would add is that during that discussion with our water engineers, we also discussed the um. What other options we have for water supply to the uh, Pathfinder project.
Other than the San Bernardo wells?
That's correct, and um, just kind of rehashed why um, the geotech report was concerning to them as far as water availability on that site. Um, and that nothing has changed in that regard. However, we, there is a potential of a surface water uh, supply. Given where our property is and we, so we're gonna pursue that as well to make sure that we have at least another option. Um, I don't anticipate things not moving forward to San Bernardo. I think we're very close to being able to agree with them. On the terms that they're asking for, but I always want us to have another option just in case. So that's definitely other update of chairs in relation to housing.
Sounds prudent. Commissioner Gleason, any questions regarding housing?
Um, no, but thanks for the, those updates.
Sure.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay, moving on to item eight, manager matters. Mike, we don't have anything in particular listed, but do you have any updates for us?
Um, very minimal for this uh, intervening week. We'll have more next week at our regular meeting. Um, but our um. Consultants are here and holding public uh, sessions for the behavioral health gaps analysis, Stedman Group. Um, I know I got to speak with them briefly and um, they held a in-person meeting, I believe, tonight is Telluride and then tomorrow is in Norwood. Where those public meetings will be occurring. Had the pleasure of attending Chris Holstrom's celebration last week at the Patagonia store for her work with Eco Action Partners. Uh, well deserved and attended function as well as saying goodbye to our library director, Sarah Landryu. Um, definitely gonna miss both of those women uh, in their contributions to this community. Jared and I have uh, been meeting with the Parks and Open Space Department about how we can reconfigure uh, some of our staffing and organization. To a dr- better address fleet and facilities, especially as our county facilities with our rental homes uh, continue to grow. Tomorrow I'll be attending the Region Ten uh, board meeting, but online, so I'll be here. As I mentioned, we have a regular meeting next Wednesday, the second, but no meetings on the ninth or sixteenth. And then we'll be back for, we would have been on for the twenty-third. Uh, as the next regular meeting, but we're shifting that to be Tuesday uh, April twenty-second. Um, and I don't know, I think Commissioner Gleason, you may be the last person that I did not speak to about this. But I was able to catch uh, Commissioner Waring, he was okay with that plan as well. Um, and the reason would be so that Jared and I can go to the CCCMA conference, he got a scholarship. Um, my membership has also come to um, per our um. From ACHA.
Be- because Mike is a speaker at some conference.
Well, I'm also, yeah.
And he's the president.
Vice president this year, well, president, thanks. Um, but anyway, so that meeting on the twenty-second, we're gonna be putting out a lot of uh, material for the public because we're hoping to confirm. Interviews with our two sheriffs of our sheriff candidates. That afternoon and then are anticipating a public meet and greet at the Blasterville Schoolhouse. That evening so that the commissioners can get feedback from the public about the two candidates. Yes.
And I, I would only mention. Applications are still open.
They are.
And so uh, as of now, we have two candidates. Uh, I believe the posting. Goes through this weekend, um, or through next Monday, uh, so our, our posting for the sheriff end on the thirty-first. Uh, we currently have two candidates, uh, but the door is still open for the dark horse to come in. Have another opportunity, so.
I have a quick question about the Stedman Group.
Yes.
Um, informational or workshops. I was considering attending the um, morning session tomorrow, is that?
Absolutely.
Supported and just as a UMC board member and also as a commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'm gonna plan on that.
Uh, I also have a note for, is the twenty-second okay with you, Lena?
Uh, yes, that's fine with me, yeah.
Okay, um, and I had a note also that. At that meeting, we planned to have an executive session to, to continue to discuss the um. Legal review of the deed restriction. Is that still um, on the schedule? And it was, would Tuesday work for that part of the agenda?
I'll double check with Lane Thomason.
Okay.
Um, yeah, but that's our plan was to to go forward on that day and we've been having meetings in the meantime to make sure we're on track. For that conversation.
And it sounds like we are. Okay. Great. All right.
And, and we were also discussing the idea of turning the April thirtieth work session into being a special meeting. So that you might make a decision on who you would choose to appoint. As the next sheriff, knowing or understanding that that appointment would be um, prospective. Because they, the sheriff wishes his resignation is on the second of June.
That works for me.
That's fine for me as well.
Thank you.
Make that note on our services as a special meeting now. Um, okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we are now um, ready to move on to item nine A. Uh, which is, well, nine is attorney matters and A is a litigation update and more. Thank you for the memo that you shared. Would you like to. Address that in any way?
Uh, no, unless there's any specific questions from the commissioners on. The litigation update, I think it speaks for itself. I try not to include too much detail there, um, just enough to let you know where things stand. Um, but happy to. Go in more depth if there's any questions.
I did have a few questions. Um, on page two, the Kervman situation. It sounds like that has been resolved, right?
Yeah.
There that says resolved.
Yeah, and that one I noticed hadn't been included on the two most recent updates. So I just put that on there because it looked like it, we hadn't closed the loop on that one, so I wanted to. To put that on there, even though that is somewhat an, an older update.
And do you know if there was any um. Do we have to reach a settlement, like a monetary settlement?
Yeah, and I could share the details of that with you offline if you're interested.
No, that's okay. I know it's just popped back in my mind. Okay, thank you. I noticed there are a lot of items on here where San Miguel County is named. By virtue of um, our office, but we're really not at any risk of. Um. I'm not sure what I'm trying to say.
Are you referring to the, the public trustee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Was, are they all for public trustee? Yes.
There's four of those, I believe. Um, yeah, and those are. May, you know, private property disputes that the public trustee is named in those because of the, the nature of the. The public trustee deed, um, not, they don't implicate. The county in any way, and in, in. All of those cases so far, we file what's called a disclaimer of interest. Essentially, we're, we don't have a stake in this game. Um, so we're, you have not actively participated in those matters.
And these are not requiring a lot of staff time to manage?
No, not, almost none.
Okay, that's good, and I see you've taken that over from Lane Thomason, who was our.
Mm hmm.
Um. Okay, those are my intentions.
I just had a timing question. You might not know this, but the um, Lucarelli. Uh, versus. San Miguel County, Telluride, town of Telluride. Um. The board will need to consider. Appeal of Rule Fifty-seven. Do you have any idea where we're at in that process and timing potentially?
So that won't happen until we receive an order from the court on the. Secondary part of the case, which is the rule one oh six, and that's now all the briefing is complete, and so we're just waiting for an order from the court and. I don't know what the typical timeline, I think we would expect something within the next couple of months on that.
Thanks, I was just a little unclear on that. Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Lena?
Nothing else. Thanks for all the work you're doing. This list was. Robust.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we are now um. At nine B, which is a not only potential executive session, but. Actual executive session to discuss and determine positions relative to negotiations, instructing negotiators on land adjacent to Ilium Valley, Highway one forty-five intersection. And discussion of the wastewater treatment authority according to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Four B and four E. Um, question, should this be two separate executive sessions or can we handle them all at once since they're so closely related?
I think we could do it in one since they are. You know, essentially on the same topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two pieces of the same. Issue.
Okay, so um, I will just mention for the public that um. We are going into executive session, or we so soon after we have a motion. We will discuss only the uh, matters listed on the agenda. Um, when we are done, we will report out. Um, but. I don't know that there will be a whole lot to say and then the meeting will be over, so um. If people wanna hang around for however long this takes, they're welcome to, but um, I don't expect anything substantive to occur after this agenda item. So um, are we ready for a motion? Or Mike, you have something to say?
Um. Only. Mr. Thule has his hand up. I didn't know if he wanted to entertain the comment before you entertain the motion, but I'm gonna just make you aware.
I'm not sure what you were commenting on, maybe the litigation update. Did I miss that?
That could have been.
Okay, Mr. Thule, would you like to comment on the litigation update? If you would, please unmute yourself and you may begin speaking now.
Uh, this is a, a question of process. Um, you know, do I need to speak? About executive session orders, uh, uh, executive session items, uh. On the non-agenda time, or can I testify now just before uh, you go into executive session? One would be more topical.
Don't entertain questions regarding executive session matters.
No, no, it, it's just making a comment that goes to one of those subjects.
Um, I suppose we could take three minutes on, on your comments on. Topics we will discuss in the executive session.
Well, I'll keep it a lot shorter. This is a huge topic. Um, uh. But I would just like to, and, and you know, my uh, health conditions, my disability. Um, uh, my status as a vulnerable adult under the protection of the county. Uh, under the guardianship, if, if you wish, um, although the exact current legal definition of that um, is probably relevant. Um, I just, uh. You know. Like to note that the, the fiscal practices, which you considered off-topic regarding the gondola are very relevant to um, the wastewater plant. And that uh, objection was. Uh, completely inappropriate, uh, and I'm continuing to work on those. Um, and uh, uh, doing so as my stress-related chronic condition um, allows. But you know, I'm, I'm voicing my extreme objection to that constitutional violation. Um, you know, Democrats in general, uh. Are not known for their fiscal knowledge. But you have that knowledge.
Intersect the wastewater treatment authorities. You have comments to make on those subjects?
Uh, this was regarding the wastewater authority and it more is in process. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session.
Second. How do you vote?
I, I.
I as well. The time is eleven thirty-nine and we are now moving into executive session for item nine B. So Carmen, how are we gonna handle that logistically this time?
She's got it.
You got it. I see just one member.
I'm gonna just.
Okay, well, as well. So we're going into a breakout room. You join the breakout room?
Um, no, I just.
Unout of, it's not out of Zoom.
Left it to the meeting.
I think that's fine, right? And then I'll just stay in so that I can go out and close the meeting.
We're ready.
We're good.
Okay.
Hello, San Miguel County. It is one forty four P M on Wednesday, March twenty sixth. We are now out of executive session. During the executive session, we discussed only the matters that were listed on the agenda. We gave staff direction on how to move forward but did not make any decisions. We are now done with our agenda for the day. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ayes well.